Today we now call the court of order. First on the agenda, prayer.
I think we did have one of our negative report, I believe this father passed away this morning, so remember his family in our prayer. I don't know any of the arrangements or anything, but I think June will try to let us all know when he finds out. I don't know.
Hey, devil father, thank you for this day, thank you for the blessings you give us. We just want to ask a special blessing for the poor family that you will come from them during this time and watch over and protect them, Lord. Just be there for them, Lord, when they need you. I'll lift it up to you once again, just to lift this county up to you, Lord, that we can do the best we can do for the decisions that we need to make here. We ask a special blessing to these commissioners and their families, all the citizens of our county, thank you for their law enforcement. First responders that we have in our community, Lord, for what they do, for each and every one of us, we ask these things in your name.
We did the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we have roll call. Matt and Clark.
Graham.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Thatcher.
Here.
Chadwick.
Here.
Wells.
Day.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Wells.
McBrer.
Here.
Newman.
Nick Ward.
Phillips.
Here.
Russ.
Here.
Slick.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from September eighteen twenty seventeen.
I'll make a motion. Motion. Okay, are there any changes or corrections? Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have nobody's and surety bonds approvals. We have Jessica R. Pennington, Thomas Scott Thompson, and Daniel Lynette Strunk on the Motion to approve. Motion. Second. Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have surety bonds, rely insurance company, Sharon Sexton.
Make the motion, please.
Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have the financial reports. You have the monthly reports from the county clerk restroom, and the quarterly reports from county clerk restroom, finance department, and the bathroom's office. They're all in your booklet. Entertaining motions approved. Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to school matters. Mr. Hall, the president, would he like to speak? Okay, do we have anyone here representing O'Nah Special School District? Okay, anyone here from the sheriff's department to have a sheriff's report? Okay, moving on to road matters. Anyone here from the road department? No? Okay, moving on to committee reports and resolutions. First on the agenda is Parks and Recreation.
Do I give you my vote?
What? Did I skip any of the votes? Okay, do we have anyone here from the general public that would like to speak? Moving on to committee reports and resolutions, and I'm sorry about that. Nick, first, Parks and Recreation, Chairman Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Park and Race Committee was called to order at five o'clock at noon by Chairman King Chadwick. I'm here as president, King Chadwick, Chief of Action, I'm asking for request. If his absence, Chairman Martin Jeffers is standing ready. There's no action taken at the meeting, I had a motion by Chief of Action, I'm taking mine by me and Smith, adjourned meeting. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve that.
I'll say. Okay, voting on voice vote to approve the minutes, Parks and Recreation, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next we have Emergency Service Committee, Ernest Phillips, and he says he's got a sore throat, ears all stuck up, and he would like to do his.
Scott County Emergency Services Committee, October sixth, two thousand seventeen, members present, Ernest Phillips, Rick Burke, Blue Day, King Chadwick, Robin, Pink Road, Patty Brown, members absent with Sam Lowes. We were called to order at six p.m. by Ernest Phillips, Chair, motion by Patty Brown, taken by Rick Burke, to recommend the EMA Director Wendy Walker, the county mayor's office, to monitor the county's emergency communications equipment at the Robbins Tower, Comcast Tower Huntsville, and the Grapevine Road Tower in O'Nah, voting aye all present. Motion by Patty Brown, taken by Rick Burke, voting aye all present.
Motion by Burr, taken by Burr. Okay, any discussion? Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the county needs to assign someone to check and monitor emergency communications equipment belonging to the county located at the towers of Huntsville, Robbins, and O'Nah, and whereas Tracy Jeffers for the Scott County, South Scott County Fire Department has been serving in this capacity but is no longer able to continue, whereas the service would generally consist of checking the fire repeaters at the towers two to three times per year to ensure they are working properly. Whereas the Emergency Services Committee has requested that EMA Director Wendy Walker, serving in this capacity, the office of the Scott County Mayor has offered to assist her with this responsibility. Now therefore, be resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby assign the EMA Director Wendy Walker, the office of the Scott County Mayor, to check and monitor the fire repeaters and associated emergency equipment located at the tower of Huntsville, Robbins, and O'Nah, and agree not to hold them responsible for any damages to the equipment that might occur. To be further resolved, that either party shall be authorized to contact overbait communications for service of equipment if necessary. And be further resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby expresses its most sincere gratitude to Tracy Jeffers for his service and volunteer fire department in Scott County.
Okay, entertain the motion.
Motion.
Say.
Have a first and a second, any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I did it. It was obvious that this may be more than what you stand for better days, and I appreciate that you stepped up and offered to help with it. But to comment and say, agree not to hold them responsible for any damage to the equipment that might occur, basically, just like saying that I'm not responsible by damage truck, we're all county employees, so do it does it. So, and I do appreciate Tracy on his work, but I'll have to open this, this conference call in.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, do we roll call vote on this one?
Graham.
Burr.
Thatcher.
Aye.
Chadwick.
Aye.
Day.
Aye.
Chadwick.
Aye.
McBrer.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Anyone want to change their vote? Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds, Chairman Russ.
Building ground committee, October sixth nineteen, a Rick Russ Chair, right in the first, number one there, that's got a motion, Ernest Phillips, I don't really know who's got the motion, Ernest. This one. It's one mail, I get it. It's here, I didn't know.
Let that contract, that's a very important.
Okay, all right. Motion by Eric Newport, second, Robin Newman, to recommend the Scott County Commission to sell the old Scott County Jail property with consideration of some one dollar to the town hospital. Dick shall have restricted covenants to preserve historical condition and give the county the right of per se refusal. The current condition of the old jail should be documented for the transfer of the town hospital to document and report to the county commission. All expenses incurred for the property not incurred by the grant, voting aye all present. Motion by Eric Newport, second, Robin McBrer, to recommend the committee for the resale of land bought at the link of tax sales. The members recommended of David Duke Mayor, Commissioner Mike Slade, and Robin McBrer, Robin Newman, and Rick Russ, voting aye all present. Motion by Robin McBrer, second, Eric Newport, adjourned meeting, voting aye all present.
Mr. Russ, approve of the amendment? Okay, voting on voice vote to approve, all in favor say aye. Motion carries.
We have resolution. Whereas, House Mayor Deffers on behalf of the town hospital requested to acquire the property of the old Scott County Jail for Scott County, and whereas the county has on two prior occasions solicited requests for proposing to sell or lease the property, but is rejected in proposal, and whereas it is important to the county government that the property be maintained in a condition that preserves its history, its designation on the national register of stored places, and whereas on behalf of the town hospital Mayor Deffers has committed to make necessary preparations improvements to the property to preserve its history, and whereas the Scott County Attorney and Fraktive Deeds Convoyance contains certain restricted covenants to write a per se refusal in favor of the county, which is attached to this resolution, and whereas such a transfer would be in accordance with Tennessee COVID annotated. Now therefore be it resolved that Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby accorded the transfer of the old Scott County Jail to the town hospital and authorize the execution of the attached deed of convoyance of Scott County Mayor. And you have a copy of the deed within our group, what we asked for, for our last mission.
What I added was to make sure that the grantee, which would be the town hospital, would not sublet the property without express written consent of the grantor, which would be the county. Also that any, any kind of purchase pursuant to the right of per se refusal would not include any grant dollars, and it would have to be out of pocket expenses by the grantee, gentlemen.
Can you entertain the motion? Motion. Russ? Motion. I'll say the motion. Chadwick. Okay, any discussion? Okay, voting on roll call vote.
Graham.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Thatcher.
Aye.
Chadwick.
Aye.
Day.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
McBrer.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Slick.
Is anyone like to change their vote? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, whereas Scott County has purchased or acquired parcels of real property at the link of tax sales, and whereas Tennessee COVID annotated provides for community four members elected by the county legislative body, who along with the county mayor, shall determine and set a fair price for each parcel, for which the price the parcel may be sold. And whereas the building grounds committee has recommended that Commissioner Mike Slade and Robin McBrer, Rick Russ, Robin Newman be appointed to this committee to serve along with the Scott County Mayor. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the appointments of Mike Slade and Robin McBrer, Rick Russ, Robin Newman, and the Scott County Mayor to commission the resale of links to tax properties.
Entertaining motion. I'll say the motion.
I'll say the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the Community Development Committee, Chairman Newman, and she is in a nice feeling of school drink, is what she says today.
Community Development Committee, October sixth, members present, Robin Newman, Eric Newport, Chief of Action, Chief of Action, Chief of Action, Mike Slade, Trent Cross, meetings called order six thirty-five, by Robin Newman, Chairman, number one, is monthly update on the Luther program by Mary Ann Produce, number two is motion by Eric Newport, second by Rick Russ, adjourned meeting, voting aye all present.
Motion, Chris Burr. Okay, any discussion? Voting on voice vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Governor and Committee.
Governor and Committee, October sixth, members present, King Chadwick, Mike Slade, Blue Day, Chief of Action, Ernest Phillips, Patty Brown, Trent Cross, meetings called order six thirty-six, by Trent Cross, Chairman, number one, Kristi Harnes, Director, and Scarlett Ellis, Chairman of the Scott County Family Justice Center, announced the community forum of the Scott County Family Justice Center project will be at the Scott County Office Building at five thirty p.m. October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. The center was requesting support from the county commission for utilities, now six hundred dollars per month, started January two thousand eighteen. To Mike Slade, second, Patty Brown, adjourned meeting, voting aye all present.
entertain the motion, Chris Burr. I'll say. Motion to approve, say. Okay, any discussion on that matter?
I have a question.
Okay.
If we vote aye on this, are we offering this six hundred dollars more?
No, I don't think they could give the answer. We're the first to record. Okay, voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the Budget Committee, Chairman Cross, which he's not here. Mr. Slade.
Budget Committee, October sixth, members present, Trent Cross, Robin McBrer, Patty Brown, Rick Russ, Mike Slade, meetings called order six forty-seven, p.m. by Trent Cross, Chairman, motion by Mike Slade, taken by Rick Russ, to approve budget amendment number one for solid waste, one sixteen, amendment number one for highway and motorworks, one thirty-one, amendment number one for gearing up our schools, one forty, voting aye all present. Motion by Rick Russ, taken by Robin McBrer, adjourned meeting, voting aye all present.
Motion, Chris Burr. Any discussion? Okay, voting on voice vote, committee's correct, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need to take a please? I think we do, please. You have all the amendments there, try not to be in.
How much of the motion that is for this record?
Need to approve.
All approval.
Okay, is there any discussion on the amendments? Okay, we need a roll call vote on this one.
Graham.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Thatcher.
Aye.
Chadwick.
Aye.
Day.
Aye.
Jeffers.
Aye.
McBrer.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Slick.
Okay. Motion carries. Any discussion? Okay, motion carries, moving on to the finance department.
Finance Committee, October seventh, two thousand seventeen, members present, Mike Slade, Ernest Phillips, King Chadwick, Dick Sexton, Del Perdue, members absent, Bill Hall, Newman, also President Ginger Reynolds, the Finance Director, and Tony Parkerson of Stour machinery. Meetings called order five p.m. by Mike Slade, Chair, motion by Ernest Phillips, taken by Del Perdue, to open the bids, voting aye all present. Motion by King Chadwick, taken by Dick Sexton, forward the bid for Catalina backhoe from Stour machinery corporation to the Scott County, Scott Solid Waste Board, voting aye all present. Motion by King Chadwick, taken by Del Perdue, to approve the sale of two thousand eight Chevrolet ambulance, VIN number one GBJG three one six four eight one one zero two seven L six on GovDeals, voting aye all present. Motion by King Chadwick, taken by Del Perdue, adjourned meeting, voting aye all present.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The full court need to approve the sale of that vehicle?
Okay, other matters? Any other, any more other matters need to be done? Okay, come on then.
I believe I missed my opportunity earlier. I thought I was scheduled to speak tonight, so I just skipped the general public thing, so I apologize for that. I won't keep you all long, I just wanted to come up today and give you guys an update on how the shelter is doing and a couple of things of how we're moving forward. One of the first things I wanted to talk about was the thing that we talked about the last time I was here, and that was about the building and grounds. We have explored several avenues for how we can get funding to be independent, because we want to see ourselves as an independent organization, and you all have helped us so incredibly much with your support for utilities and things like that. So we have explored several possibilities. The main problem that we have run into, however, is the fact that even when we're filling out our grant applications on the federal level and things like that, they're asking about our service area. And though we aren't able to produce statistics, we have an image with the name Scott County Homeless Shelter. And there are a couple of components to that, that we have looked at and addressed and even spoke with a couple of commissioners about, about how we can go about changing that image. And number one, the fact that we serve three counties makes it to where just being Scott County, that's one of the first questions I ask when we look at funding from other organizations, well, do you only serve Scott County? You know, is that the only way? It's like, well, we serve the majority of our people from Scott County, but we do have some from Morgan County and Campbell County and so forth. And so one of the things that we want to eliminate from our name is Scott County, okay? That being said, the second part that we want to eliminate from our name is homeless. And the reason, well, there's several reasons for that. First of all, the word homeless, as you all know, has a terrible stigma attached to it, okay? When you say homeless, they don't think about, you know, Jane and GM who moved in with their cousin or their aunt or something like that, and just need help getting back on their feet. They always think about the guy on the side of the road, bumming for money, you know, drugs and stuff like that. And so with that, and the services that we have begun offering, and have been offering for several years, we feel like that the word homeless shelter should be eliminated from our name as well. And so we have come up with a name that we are proud of, and it is Pinnacle Resource Center. And the reason we are changing our name to Pinnacle is because the word pinnacle itself means the highest point, and also means the most successful. And with our statistics and the success rate of our program, we feel like that we are the most successful program for housing and social, what we call social rehabilitation, because that's really the game that we have gotten into. We have moved past just housing homeless people, and we are moving into helping folks in impoverished situation pick themselves back up by their bootstraps. And as a lot of you know, we have changed our logo to be a hand up, not a handout, because we feel like so many nonprofits, and I'm not trying to kick anybody in the face here or anything like that, we feel like a lot of nonprofits just want to throw money at problems, and nothing's being done. But we take a more proactive approach to these issues, and we are working directly with our clients to make sure that we analyze and break down what their situations are, and we are giving intensive case management. And I mean, even after they leave our program, we're doing follow-ups with these folks six to nine months out, to make sure that they don't fall back in. And as I said, eighty, eighty-five percent of our population, depending on if you're talking about emergency shelter, rehousing, comes right here in Scott County, okay? So, also the name, and this is just me personally, and I always talk about it wherever I go, since we receive state fund dollars, we cannot recognize ourselves as a religious organization per se. But I do want to throw out there that I always find a way to incorporate this into our element as well. We, the, the second temptation of Jesus was when he went to the pinnacle. Satan took him to the pinnacle of the land and said, if you be the son of God, throw yourself off of here, for it's written that angels will carry you to the ground safely. And that really hit me one day when I was doing my Bible study, because it's like, you know, our people face these temptations, they face bad decisions, they, they, they face these possibilities of being thrown off at any given point. And one of the things that we do at our organization is to help prevent that. And so we feel like the name Pinnacle Resource Center is going to reflect who we are, what we do, and because we are the most successful at what we do in our area, especially when you look at, again, I don't want to name anybody in particular, but if you look at other homeless shelters and what they do, they don't offer the services that we provide. We want to make sure food, clothing, and shelter is covered, and that's what we do, Almost, approximately seventy-eight percent of our cases, and I can get, you know, break down on that, but seventy-eight percent of our cases are considered successful cases, meaning these are people that come in, maybe they have any income, they have social security or something like that, and we just help them get housed. Or maybe it's some folks down the street that, you know, has gotten into some trouble, you know, some drug problems or something like that. We've been going directly to the jails and getting people. We've been going directly to the jails and getting people as they come out of jails and bring them out, find them jobs, find them a place to live, get them clothes, get those, those family relations built back up so they have people that will support them and talk to them. Or we have also been able to relocate some people. Some people that are right here in the county are like, look, you know, I just don't feel like I need to be here, I don't feel like there's the resources here for me, even though there are. If, if I could just get to, you know, so-and-so place, I'd be better off. And so that's how we've been fixing the problems. We've been helping them directly get the resources they need and giving them that intensive case management to set themselves up, or get, helping them get to a place that they feel like they can be more successful. So I wanted to come here tonight to give you all the update to let you know that we are delivering on our promises. And because we're delivering on our promises, I wanted to talk to you all about the efforts being made to get the funding necessary to become independent from you all and start handling our own utility bills and so forth. So within the next year, my goal is to try to find some grant funding that's going to allow us to begin working with you all to get our property independent of the government. We want to be a benefit to the county. We don't want to be a burden financially. And so, but I just want to give you all an update and let you know that we do want to change our name to Pinnacle Resource Center to be more inclusive, to be brighter, have a brighter name, and to reach out to people more. So I just kind of wanted to reach out. If you all have any questions or anything, I'll be glad to answer them right quick.
You said the former county's name, and I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
Are you still receiving funded outside the county from the other county?
Yes, sir. Actually, as a matter of fact, Campbell County increased its donations this last year. We are now a line item budget for them. They have upgraded their donation from $5,000 to $7,000 this year, and next year they want to add even more to that.
And Morgan County is also contributing?
Yes, sir. They are still contributing $5,000 a year. As a matter of fact, I need to call them. I forgot to call them today. Thank you for reminding me. It's about time for them to send me the check.
You said that you've taken, and I don't want to hold this for too long, and I want to ask you right now to come back to our Building and Grounds Committee in two weeks to address that if you can.
Uh-huh.
But if you're taking, or you're taking people out of jail, are you considering possibly for rehabilitation, some work out the road?
We have looked at the possibility of whether or not there's any monies available through the Department of Corrections to see if there's even a possibility of being like a transitional housing or, you know, something like that for the people through the jails. It's just, we have found that by going directly to the jails right now, again, I think I mentioned this last year, the nonprofit world is really weird right now, because in order to get the money to do something, you have to go ahead and start doing it. And so if we can go ahead and show them that we're doing the appropriate outreach to places like the correction facility and stuff like that, and they're going to look back and say, hey, you know what, these guys have done a really good job, they submitted this request for funding, that's something that we are definitely looking into.
You got my attention when you said you want to stand alone.
Yeah. Well, we talked about that before, Rick, so I figured.
Two weeks.
Yep, no problem. So what's that date specifically, Rick? So I can go ahead and put it on my calendar? Pop quiz. I'm sorry, sir? First Monday of November. Okay. Were there, were there any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Yeah, I was just wondering about how long you stay, you know, these, you know.
We, okay, since, since we've kind of, in the last year, as well as getting the proper controls in place that we had discussed, Red, you and I and Blue and a couple of the people, we had talked about our program, just getting those things hammered out, our, our program is actually a very interesting place to be right now, because our population fluctuates and it looks like a, just like a crazy roller coaster ride, because we have limited now to a sixty-day program. We, we are sixty days in, sixty days out. At the end of the sixty days, if we feel like they're doing well, they can submit a letter of request to extend their stay, but there has to be like really good reasons for that or so forth. But as soon as they get in, we had a person, as a matter of fact, a person from the jail that came to us, and I'm going to miss your name, of course, but she came to us, and within two and a half hours of being out of jail, we already had her the food stamp resources that she would need to last until she could get on her feet. We had a job for her. She had four or five outfits of clothes, and we had already arranged her transportation back and forth to work through Efra, within two and a half hours. And so she was in our program for just a few days, because we were able to get everything set up, and we can actually set up their housing ahead of time now, because the state wants us to do the housing first option. And so we was able to get her successfully housed and set back up on her feet, literally within days of getting out of jail. I'm really proud of that story, so I like to tell it.
That's great. How many employees you all have now?
We have, we have two, three full-time employees, one part-time employee, and we have a lady that's working in our fish store and helping us out a little bit there, so, yeah.
You all did a great job.
Thank you.
You know that we appreciate you.
I appreciate you, Patty, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, I'm not going to take up your all's time. I, you know, I appreciate it. I know you guys were kind of pressed for time tonight, but if you all need me, please call me. The number's easy, 663-3333. I'm in the office Monday through Friday, okay? Thanks a lot, appreciate you. Rick, I'll see you in two weeks.
All right.
Okay, we had Jimmy Berg here. If you might give us an update on taxes and Jeff with this coming in.
It's an honor to get to be here tonight. I want you all to know that. I appreciate everyone over in, uh, taxes coming in great, and I haven't had the opportunity to tell you. I appreciate you all getting the budget appropriated and ready to go. We got to collect early again this year, not as early as we did last year, but we sent notices out on September the fifteenth, and the actual due date for the taxes is actually October, the first Monday of October of every year. So we, two years in a row, due to county commission doing their job, getting the budget timely, we've got to collect early. And within one month, we've collected almost $2 million in one month. So out of about eight point two million dollars, we've already within that. And last year, we collected fifty-five percent in October, end of October 31st. I anticipate we'll do that or better, because collections are coming in the next two weeks. Mortgage companies will be paying, a lot of, we've already had two of the top ten payers to pay their taxes. They're taking advantage of the two percent discount, and, and we're available to give that discount if you pay right now, all the way up to October the 31st. There's still a one percent discount in November, through November the third. But more people every year is taking advantage of our discount. And, and as you all well know, if the money starts flowing, we don't have any problem coming up with shortfalls of cash flow. We have in the past several, it's been a few years, but the cash flow wasn't too good. You'd have to go and get tax anticipation notes, but we haven't had to do that in a few years. And it's because you all are on the ball, getting the budget out the way it needs to be, and I just want to commend you all for that. So it's going, our tax relief program, let me say a little bit about that. We've got a thousand and forty people on our tax relief program. As of today, I look, we've already served five hundred and seven of those recipients. Their taxes is already paid. They have come in and paid half of those folks. And it's because the state of Tennessee has given the tax relief program, they're taking advantage of it. Actually, the tax relief program this year raised their amount up to $25 more than it was last year. And our veterans programs, last year, the most you could make was, most they would reimburse was $604. This year, they've raised it back to where it was at about four years ago. The assessment is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so that means a hundred percent total permanent disabled person, the amount, the most they'll pay is a thousand and seventy-eight dollars. And if you're living in an old, not a special school district, that's up to $1,254. So the state of Tennessee has really beat the tax relief program up, and it's helped a lot of folks here in Scott County. So things is going good with taxes. Y'all got any questions?
Where are we at on the personal property taxes? Do you think a while we were working on that?
It's, it's making strides. I know that question would come up. It's not being, laying there and not anything being done, but there's, we've got some collecting, some we're still working on. I've got back tax attorneys working on a case that, uh, it could go to court anytime, just put it this way, but they, they're not being ignored. It takes some time when, when they're looking, because people's trying to find a way not to pay taxes, some of them's trying to find a way. We, one certain person has been very helpful coming in, giving their information. They disagree with some assessments, of course, that's, that's between them and the, and the property assessor. But they're just not saying, no, we're not going to pay. They're, we've got some ready to pay if their assessments is right, and they've got to get their paperwork in order. We can't just say, you're, we're going to come off just to get you to pay. They've got to prove their assessments, and we need to get everything right. But that, that one case probably be going to court if they can't figure out the true assessments. And there is some discrepancy in some assessments, and that's a reason they're working on.
Other than the assessments that being rebated, is, you all have the right and the power to negotiate and cut things down?
I don't, no.
Does our tax attorney have the right to do that?
I believe the only person has right to negotiate anything. The assessor can change assessments, and that's all the way an amount can be changed. It's got to match the assessments and whatever the tax rate was at that time. If there's any negotiating, I believe it's left up to this body to negotiate anything.
That answered my question.
I don't, I don't have any right to negotiate one penny. I will do whatever the court tells me to do and whatever the law will allow. But if you're going to come into my office and say, I want this fixed, no, I'm not going to do that, I can't do that. It's, it's not my call. Am I right, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
So, and, and I believe you're a little aware of some of the cases that, that's going on, and, and I believe there's been some progress made. Haven't seen any money yet, but there's a few people have come to the table and, and want to discuss their cases. So, but as for me, I can't, I can't negotiate nothing. Any other questions? I will say this, on the delinquent property taxes, they're coming in good. The amounts is sometimes very large, some months is good, and with the schedule, our clerk and master of God, if they stick to the schedule, a lot of those taxes will be caught up within three years, and you all will be really proud of that, I think. And he's supposed to be having a sale every three months to get, to get some of these taxes collected. It's totally left up to the clerk and master and the back tax attorney to go through that process. When it leaves my office, I don't have anything to do with it. So, but I will say there, the money is coming in better, and, and it looks pretty good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, is there any other matters that need to come before this body? Are there any announcements that need to be made? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Okay. Voting on voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Chairman Slade, would you?
Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the meeting, and we can go back to the air. We just pray God it is, we will fit down, and just thank you for the citizens that we have served. Thank you for our communities and what they mean to us, just asking how do you believe that you'll lead God to direct us and bring us back safe, and we ask these things in your name. Thank you.